Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Cheryl Bethia?
Here.
Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Joel Reese asked to be excused. Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Basim Verdas?
Yeah.
Faraz Khan?
Here.
Michael Dougherty?
Here.
Vassaliki Anastasikos?
Yeah.
Chairman Thomas?
Here.
There are new minutes, so moving on to first resolution, KMP Somerset Holdings, ZBA 220001, do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yeah.
Faraz Khan?
I wasn't part of it.
Michael Dougherty?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsting, oh my God, wrong board. Chairman Thomas?
Yes, wrong by still. Anyway, zoning bylaws. If there's no discussion, I believe we need two resolutions.
No, just one.
Just one resolution to approve the amendments.
All right. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws.
I'll second.
Okay.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Faraz Khan?
I'll refrain.
Michael Dougherty?
Yes.
Vassaliki Anastasikos?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
There is no discussion there typically wouldn't be. Hearings, Linda Swain? Linda Swain, ZBA 230001, C variance in which the applicant requests a constructive front porch addition at 27 Wortman Street Somerset, block 73.01, lot 35 in the R10H zone.
Ms. Swain, before you proceed, can you just raise your right hand? You swear testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And are you the only one that's going to testify then?
Yes. Oh, well.
I might.
Well.
Then he has to swear.
Swear you in this way if you have questions. Can you raise your right hand? You just need the mic, you need to give him the mic.
We're going to swear you in.
I'll swear you in now. Can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Yep.
Yours, Mrs. Swain?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're not represented, right?
No, I'm not.
Okay, then first, would you just give us a overview?
Sure. So this is a, it's an existing home in the East Millstone Historic District. It's my understanding that it's an older home. If you look at the plans that are submitted to you and also were included in the TRC report, you'll see that the existing house is located currently within the required front setback, again, because it was most likely, I'm sure, built well before zoning was put in place. The applicant is proposing a front porch addition. Again, the architectural plans that were, the proposed architectural plans were in your packet. It's basically an open front porch off the front of the house. The existing house is at 13.2 feet from the front property line where 25 is required, and with the placement of the new front porch, that setback would be 6.2 feet. The applicant did go before the Township Historic Commission, and they, it's my understanding that they were approved, these plans were approved by the Historic Commission. I wasn't at that meeting, so if you have any questions, you'll have to direct it to the applicant.
Okay, is that sum up what your?
Absolutely, yes.
How, what are the, what's the size of the porch?
Can I let my architect? He's our architect.
The porch is seven feet deep by the width of the house. And I don't have a dimension on that, so.
Okay, I'm just trying to establish that. Seven feet is not a exorbitant size.
No, I would prefer eight, given the situation.
It'd be kind of unproductive to ask if it's possible to make it smaller to fit within, reduce the setback variance, so seven feet's pretty reasonable in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, it's barely enough to get a table with some chairs around it, and that's the criteria, so I think seven feet would be what we would require.
Are there any other houses on the street similar?
Yes, right across the street, there's two historic homes as well, and they also have front porches, so I'm trying to make it look cohesive with, you know, the town.
I don't have any questions, does any other board members?
The other houses are aware of what you're doing?
Yes, I submitted all the letters, and we had all the certified letters, and yeah, they're actually very happy that we're doing it because there was a lot of, you know, work done in the area that made it look nicer.
Anyone else who opened to the public? Is there anyone out there who has a question or a comment about the application? Then we'll close to the public, and in the absence of any other board discussion, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve ZBA 230001. That's entirely.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, just let me add, just for the purpose of the record, I think this could be approved both under, as a C1 and a C2. I think the fact that the house is currently in the front setback, they have no alternative to not comply because of the location of the house, and I think the fact that they prepared a plan that's, was reviewed and approved by the Historic Commission, I think it's, you know, an aesthetic improvement to the house, and again, received the blessing of the Historic Commission, so I think it could be both a C1 and a C2.
Very good. Pull the board.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Well, Bas.
A second, did we do a second?
Basim?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas, and Chairman Thomas?
Yes, good luck with it.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, second hearing, Cedar Hill Holdings, LL, ZBA 1900041, applicant seeking a D variance to allow operation of summer daycare at 152 Cedar Grove Lane Somerset, block 424.12, lot .03 in the R40 zone, carried from January 19th. And before this begins, I will be recusing myself and turning the gavel over to Mr. Shepherd.
I say this, Mr. Stahl, Mr. Stahl. Anyway, it's always a pleasure to be here. I will have this microphone embedded in my mouth. Christine, the notices, I think we extended notices, I just want to make sure we, the jurisdiction was appropriate.
Yes, the notices were previously extended, that's correct.
All right, and I still will continue, it's always a pleasure to be here, but then I look at 11 different board members up here, and I get a little nervous, and then everyone says, oh, you're filling in for Lanford, but Lanford and I always say we're like twins. Anyway, I represent Jim Stahl, S.T.A.H.L., Boris Golden Foley, Vinyolo Hyman Stahl represents the applicant, Cedar Hill Holdings LLC. The board is very familiar with the project, having been carried and testimony since last year sometime, and as we believe tonight hopefully will be the conclusion of the matter and closure. Now, I have three, two witnesses. I have Mr. Gary Dean, who is from Dean and Dolan, who will be my first witness, and I just explained this, that the report was prepared by his partner, Betsy Dolan, but Betsy is, has conflicts, it's a tough night tonight, a Thursday night, so Gary is equally bright and articulate, and he will describe the proposed operation plan. I then think that Mr., and I'm not speaking for Mr. Healy, I think Mr. Healy was going to give some comments on the operation plan. I will tell you right now that the applicant is agreeing to all elements of the operation plan, assuming the board finds it suitable and appropriate. And then I have a planner who is going to just conclude very briefly, the zoning, the planning art, the planning position. Now, the original planner was Kevin O'Brien. Kevin is recovering from knee surgery, and I think he had some other obligation, hopefully some therapy to get his leg back in perfect order, so we do have a very qualified planner. So without, and I also have to ask Mr. Chairman and Mr. Regan, Gary Dean is going to testify, but Gary then has to be in Hillsborough, so I'm hoping that he will not have to remain here, perhaps after he's done and the board questions him. Frank, it's up to you, Frank, whether you're not, you're going to ask public if they want to question him because we want to get him over to Hillsborough, but it's. Actually, it might be up to me. No, I meant, I, that's, Mr. Chairman, I meant the two of you, I didn't mean to sometimes, okay. Here's what we'll do. Yes, sir. What we'll do is we'll have Mr. Dean testify, and then we'll open it up to the public and see if the public has any questions or comments for him, and then once the, the public has been, had their opportunity, then I think we'll allow Mr. Dean to go on to Hillsborough. Thank you, I mean, that's what I meant when I said, I think I looked at you and Frank, but you're the boss, and whatever you say, we comply with. Gary?
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, just, I mean, I view this as a new application. Obviously, the applicant's been before the board before, and the board did approve a temporary use permit for the daycare for last summer, and I say that for purposes of board members voting, because I think before, with the chairman having recused himself, previously we only had five members voting, and I believe that the regular members and the first alternate, as necessary, can, can vote on this application.
Thank you. I know that the secretary, Board Secretary indicated that there were certifications circulated, that everyone was familiar with the, the application and prior testimony.
Yep.
Correct. Thank you. Hi, Mr. Dean, you want to stand up and raise your right hand?
Mr. Dean, do you swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Dean, why don't you, I know you've been here before, why don't you give the board the benefit of your, your qualifications and education expertise?
Certainly. Gary Dean and Ms. Dolan would be most upset at Mr. Stahl. The name of the firm is Dolan and Dean, ladies before gentlemen. We are headquartered in Somerville, New Jersey, and we are licensed professional engineers, as am I, specializing in the area of traffic engineering and municipal consulting for traffic-related matters. I, over the past 40 years of my career, I've appeared numerous times before this board, as well as the planning board, and I've also had the pleasure to serve at one point or another as your municipal traffic consultant in the design of various intersection improvements, traffic signals, things of that nature. I am a licensed professional engineer, and my license is in good standing.
Shepherd, I would request that he be qualified. Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Like Gary, you and Ms. Dolan prepared a traffic and operations for Cedar Hill Summer Camp, initially dated October 6, 2022, and then revised December 8, 2022. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And where was the input obtained for the conclusions and the proposals in that operation plan?
Certainly. The applicant was given the opportunity on a temporary basis to provide operations for a summer camp on the subject property. As we understand, prior approvals had been granted that allowed a summer school on the property, consistent with the, I'll say, traditional school year activities, but the distinguished, or the difference between a school in the summer and a camp in a summer gave rise to concerns about traffic activity, pickup and drop-off and the like. So under that temporary use approval, the applicant had a summer camp last summer, and as part of that approval, our office was retained to look at the operations, and when I say look, we wanted to ensure that as enrollment progressed over the summer, we captured the time when the school was at peak op, or excuse me, the camp was at peak operations. Members of our staff were present during the morning drop-off time and the afternoon pickup time. Specifically, we were there on Thursday, July 21 of 2022, from 7:00 in the morning until 10:00 in the morning, so a three-hour window to capture all of that entering traffic, not only of the campers and the drop-off activity, but obviously staff that was arriving. In the afternoon, we then had our staff present between 3:00 in the afternoon and 6:00 in the afternoon for the same reason. As, as you undoubtedly have heard from other traffic consultants, we tend to focus on the peak hour, that is, even though we counted for three hours, we look at the 60 minutes, whenever it happens, when traffic is busiest, and that occurred from 8:00 in the morning to 9:00, and then in the afternoon from 3:45 to 4:45. In the afternoon, I think that's a little important, only because that's outside, it's a little bit ahead of traditional commuter rush hour, say 4:30, 5 o'clock, as people are leaving. But nevertheless, these findings were memorialized in the December report we submitted. We counted at both the Cedar Hill School driveway and at the adjacent Cedar Hill Club driveway, the Swim Club, immediately to the south. In our report, we have a figure labeled A that graphically shows you the number of movements, you know, how many cars turned left, how many cars turned right, et cetera. I do want to identify that at the Cedar Hill Prep driveway, prior approvals were granted, and there is a turning restriction from that driveway that prohibits left turns from 7:09 and 4:06, and I was actually quite impressed at how many signs there are to instruct motorists of that. There are actually three signs, two within the driveway and one on the opposite side of the driveway. Nevertheless, when we did our counts, there's always a few individuals who wish to make the left turn and did. It's about a dozen. It's not a lot, and over the course of an hour, that's one every five minutes, but I did note that this is really the only location, whether it's a public street or a driveway, in the immediate section of the road where one cannot make a left. I don't know the reasons behind that, but I suspect it was for whatever traffic operational concerns the board or police may have had. So by and large, the overwhelming majority of traffic, 192 cars within that peak hour, properly obeyed the restriction, turned right, and continued on Cedar Grove Lane. Again, there was a handful, literally 12, 12:00 in the morning, 14:00 at night, that turned left. Most of our entering traffic also comes from the north, and we had 129 left turns coming in for drop-off at that time, contrasted with 55 at the Swim Club driveway. So most of the traffic, as we observed, in the morning, uses the Cedar Hill Prep driveway. At night, it's reversed. More parents were picking up and dropping off at the Swim Club driveway. One of the things we identified in our traffic counts is more traffic, more cars, arriving and departing than the enrollment cap that was imposed for the camp, and there is an enrollment cap of 280. So if we had 280 campers, and assuming none were siblings, and all were driven individually, and a handful of staff, one would think we're under, say, 300, and we had more. It was brought to our attention that the operation also included a drop-off activity for an off-premises camp in Piscataway, and just because of the facilities that were available, there were roughly 30 to 40 campers dropped off on Cedar Hill, at Cedar Hill, that were then put in a shuttle bus and taken to Piscataway. That practice, and the applicant understands, will be eliminated.
What, wasn't, hello, hello?
Yes.
Wasn't the number 539 cars?
We add up the ins and the outs, so it's, it's trips. In other words, if you look at our figure, we had 308 entering in the morning peak hour and 282 leaving, which gives us a total of, whatever that is, 590.
So, so I'm, I'm, so that 590, that 590, you're basically double counting, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, that's, welcome to traffic engineering. What happens is, traffic engineers, we focus on trips. It's a fancy way of, of calling a traffic movement. So each parent who drops off makes two trips. They come in, and then they leave. So traffic people are always analyzing, and inbound movements affect outbound movements, so we're always looking at those trips. But if you look at the counts on Figure A, for example, in the morning, there were 308 coming in and 282 leaving, which adds up to 590 trips, but, but that's that number. It's not, it's the same car. In other words, one car generates two trips.
And those cars are how many? The total cars, forget the trips. It was over 300?
It's a half, and so in other words, in the morning, roughly 282. The other, the imbalance between the ins and the outs are basically staff who came in and parked, they never left the site. So we've, we identified, Mr. Chairman, the fact that there was a condition imposed to limit the attendees to 280, and when we saw more cars than attendees, that raised the question with the applicant, and at that point, we learned of this other practice, taking advantage of the infrastructure, the congregation of children, and the facilities they had, for example, the buses, it made for some good ride sharing, and we'll call it transit, but, but recognizing the sensitivity of traffic, I'm representing to you, and, you know, Mr. Stahl can echo that, but that, that practice of using the lot as a drop-off for a whole different location will be eliminated.
I'm, I'm, I need, I need you to explain that a little bit better, if you don't mind. What was going on was, who owned the bus?
I believe it was the bus of the Cedar Hill Prep.
Well, Mr. Dean, and I can put on a witness, but Mr. Dean, is your understanding that the camp had a second, the operator of the camp had a second operation in Piscataway, is that correct?
Correct.
And then they were using this as a drop-off for children, and then they were put on a van and taken to Piscataway?
Correct.
And that practice, once we were made aware of it and how it was not working, it has now been permanently eliminated, is that correct?
Well, it's not summertime, but the representation is, it won't happen again in 2023 or any future years.
But I have to talk about the operations plan, so the future operation plan totally eliminates that practice.
Correct.
And that was identified to the TRC as to what we had delivered to the TRC for the proposed operation plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, the, the plan, where can I find the plan on the papers that I have? Is it in the latest TRC report? The, Mr. Chairman, the TRC report is dated January 26, 2023. Correct. And then there is the operation plan of Dolan and Dean dated October 6, 2022, revised December 8, 2022, and I believe they particularly mirror each other. Mr. Dean, did you have an opportunity to review the TRC memo?
I, I do want to just clarify, I would characterize our report as what the TRC wanted, which is, go out, do some counts, tell us what you saw, count the cars, and report that. We don't control the operations, so your staff and the applicant have agreed to an operational practice. Our role in this is literally just that, to tell you what we saw.
Well, just so we're clear, this, the chairman and the board have to approve the ultimate operations plan, now asserting what we agree to and the TRC may have recommended.
Yes.
I don't want to.
Rest.
I don't want to take jurisdiction from anybody.
That there is one, I'll say, aspect of the approval that was granted, and though well-intentioned, there are consequences, and I'm going to describe what that means. In my experience, whether it's representing private schools or daycare centers, there's always a desire to spread the traffic out so that we don't have every child who's enrolled showing up at the exact same minute and creating a real concentration of traffic within a 10-minute window. And this operation, and it, and I'm going to refer you to page four of our report, talks about the drop-off and pickup practice that was employed in an effort to spread that traffic out over a longer time period. The consequence of doing that, and just by way of example, you'll, you'll see under drop-off, the different age groups are noted, pioneers, adventurers, voyagers, et cetera. Some of those kids are to be dropped off at 8:00, others are to be dropped off at 8:30. The problem with the strictest enforcement of that is that if a family has two children of two different ages, in theory, that means a parent has to make two trips to the site. That's terrible traffic planning. So we would encourage those families that do have multiple siblings in the program to make one trip and keep the cars off the road. So I offer that for your consideration, just because, as a traffic engineer, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But for everybody else, sure, separating the older kids and the younger kids and helping distribute that traffic makes much sense, but as long as there's an accommodation, common sense dictates, let's, you know, have one car dropping off multiple children instead of the other way around. Beyond that, we did note the number of staff, most of the camp staff, just because of the age group, don't have licenses, and so that they are dropped off as well. So there is some of that included in, in the activity. So with that, that really concludes our role with this. There, there was, I believe, a requirement that the police be present to assist with the traffic movement at the driveway. My understanding is, I did not speak with the police directly, but when they were asked, they said, no, we don't need to be there, and they wouldn't. However, that the school or the camp and school did employ onsite personnel, two at the prep school, one at the camp, to help guide parents and keep the traffic moving in a unified direction. So that was done on the premises, that wasn't a requirement, but it was done as an additional, I'll say, operational practice that we would endorse and should be continued in the future.
Why, why did you, why did you say that there was two at the school and one at the camp when they were supervising this traffic?
Because the police would not.
Different question.
Be present, sure.
You, you just said there were three people doing this, but you broke them down and said two were at the school and one was at the camp?
Correct.
What does that mean? Where was the person, how, what's the differentiation?
I, I was not present, and I'm looking through the notes just to make sure I didn't reverse those two, that the school said, the camp, that we want to have a controlled, well-managed, well-run operation, and so that they elected to use their own forces to guide parents, employ them, and keep them in a unified, one-way direction. So it was not a requirement of the. So it was not a requirement of the, I'll say, temporary operation, but they elected to do it anyway. It worked well. We would endorse it from a traffic safety perspective, and we would hope that the board would find that to be a commendable practice.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I.
None of the drop-offs, wait, wait, um, none of the drop-offs are included in, in the swim club at all? You're not talking about, you're not talking about any drop-offs at the swim club?
No, the swim club was used and, and children were dropped off there and they walked to the school.
Because I don't see that in your report.
Sure. Take a look at Figure A. There's a, a little stick figure. And just for orientation, north is to the top of the page. Cedar Grove Lane is, is labeled, and it's the line to the left-hand side of the exhibit.
What page is that?
It's, it's the first non-numbered page. It's the first page in the technical appendix. It's called Figure A.
Well, I can also indicate, Mr. Rosenthal, and to the board and chairman, that Page Two of the TRC report, in fact, discusses the fact that police control of the school and swim club driveways was to be provided, and it discusses the fact that there were discussions with the police department and such control was not deemed appropriate. Instead, the camp hired school security. And then also in the upper portions of, quote, "current application" on Page Two, it does discuss the use of two driveways to even out the queues or the lines, if any. And that same report also discusses, and I'll use the word, the prohibition of using the camp as a hub for transportation to the Piscataway location. And that's on the following page.
I, I want to get back, is it Mr. Rosenthal? I, I want to get back to your question. On that Figure A, we have a, a, a box around a text that says Cedar Hill Prep driveway, and, and you'll see underneath that is a little table and two hundred and fifteen entered, two hundred and four exited, and then there's some numbers in parentheses underneath it. Underneath that, you'll see Cedar Hill Club driveway that had ninety-three enter and seventy-eight exit. And to the left of those each is, pretend you were looking at an aerial photograph of Cedar Grove Lane. The little dashes represent the driveways. So we counted both driveways. And, for example, in the morning, just, just, I know it's a lot of math, there were two hundred and four vehicles that exited the prep driveway and seventy-eight that exited the swim club driveway. And at night, that was a little different. We had a hundred and four leaving the prep driveway and one hundred and eighty-eight leaving the swim club driveway.
Oh, so in the parentheses is an indication of, of what happens in the evening?
And at the very top left-hand corner of the exhibit, you'll, you'll see morning peak hour, eight AM to nine AM, and then you'll see parentheses, afternoon peak hour, three to four. So the parentheses are, are the afternoon volumes. Yes. I'm sorry, we, we make it overly complicated sometimes. But yes, the parentheses are what happened in the afternoon. The non-parentheses are the morning volumes. And we also noted with an asterisk at the prep driveway, the number of vehicles who turned left, notwithstanding the posting of the three signs that say no left turn. There are no such restrictions at the swim club driveway, but it's a, it, it got up to fifty-three in the afternoon peak hour. And I, I, you know, I'm one of those traffic engineers that says, if there's no reason to prohibit it from a safety perspective, why do we prohibit a movement? And, and I understand there are reasons that I may not necessarily know, but that section of Cedar Grove Lane is straight as an arrow, very flat. One can see, you know, a quarter mile in either direction. So from a pure design, visibility, safety perspective, there's no reason to prohibit the lefts, but we nevertheless respect the fact that at some point in the process, it was deemed appropriate to prohibit them. But I always say, when there's a few cowboys that turn left, they do so because they can safely, and they did safely, but.
Excuse me, I have a question with regards to the Cedar Hill, Cedar Hill Club driveway. Does the prep school own that driveway?
They do not. They have.
Who owns that driveway?
The swim club does. There is an annual, I believe it's an annual, either license or, I'll say, agreement that allows prep to use their, their driveway.
Have you provided that legal agreement? And my question is, is it renewed year by year? Because when I stopped by the property today, the Cedar Hill Club driveway was in disrepair, and there were orange cones blocking entrance to that driveway. So what happens with all your numbers here when Cedar Hill Club driveway owners decide to do something else with this driveway?
Sure. It's not open now because the swim club is closed for the winter. And, and similarly, there's not a summer camp, so prep doesn't need to use that property.
They don't need to use the property to drop off, the parents to drop off kids? Because it looks like there is hardly any space. I was there at three-thirty and there were cars double parked of parents waiting to pick up their kids. I, I had a very hard time getting out of the parking.
This entire application is about summer camp.
Okay. So you're saying that right, with the exception of the summer camp, the Cedar Hill Club driveway is not being used?
Correct. And, and I'll have to defer to Mr. Healy, but there was also an agreement, and I understand the swim club was, either has approval or was intending to make renovations, and that they, at the request of the board and the township, did not proceed with those over the summer, simply so that we could go through this exercise and, and look at the numbers in the operation.
So you have not submitted here an official agreement between Cedar, Cedar Hill Prep and Cedar Hill Club owners regarding the continuous summer after summer after summer allowing Cedar Hill Prep to use the Cedar Hill Club driveway, which is clearly essential for this traffic to operate?
I, I, I'm just a traffic engineer, so I don't have any of those documents or, or knowledge as to the duration of that lease arrangement.
I understand.
And just to amplify that, there is an agreement, which I'm not sure has been provided to Mr. Healy. If it has not been, I can provide that as a condition of any action by this board.
Frankly, we, we asked the same question in TRC report.
Okay.
Is there an agreement?
And, and we've been, we've been waiting forever, Mr. Stahl, Mr. Stahl. I know it's, do I have to wear a different hat?
No, no, no. Mark was talking and then I'm trying to catch.
Right. But we don't even sound the same. So we've been waiting to see that agreement for a long, long time, but it, we never get to see it. It's, they say, yeah, yeah, we've got an agreement, but we don't see it. And the, the fact that, I was kind of hoping that they'd have a long-term agreement, but they don't. They're operating on a year-by-year basis.
Well, I can't disagree with, I can't disagree, I cannot disagree with you until I see the document. I think the document is a renewable document, and if it's not renewed, then that, remember under the proposed plan, the TRC, which is part of you, also has jurisdiction over the application. So to the extent that a, an agreement is not forthcoming and is not renewed, then we would very likely terminate that, that use. I will get that to, to you and the, and the board and Mr. Healy within several days. I, I just.
Your client is trying to say something to you.
Well, I know, I asked, come, come, come. No, 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 no. Here, here. You're not going to say anything except to me. Yes. My client, and I don't want to put her on, I can represent.
Mr. Stahl.
Because I can represent, that I will provide it. There is an agreement in place. It is an annual renewable agreement, and I will have it to everyone, tomorrow is Friday, I'll have it to the, to the board and the professionals by Monday or Tuesday. But there is a renewable agreement every year, and part of the issue would be, if it is not renewed, then the use has to stop because there's not sufficient access and parking. So I will have it. I'm surprised it, I don't want to blame Peter. I thought we had provided it to the board. I will personally take care of it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that is, that is all I have in the way of direct. It was essentially fact-finding and complying with the request of the TRC to provide you with the information as to how did the camp operate? And we all learned a few things through that. And I think Mr. Healy's TRC memorandum addresses the various scenarios that we just described, the what-ifs. What if the applicant loses that ability to use the swim club? And so I think those, those will probably, now's a good time to maybe get into those issues, if, if it's the board's pleasure.
Well, I, I have some other questions that relate to traffic. Did you do any counts of the number of cars queued up on Cedar Grove Lane to make a left-hand turn into the, the facility, either at the swim club driveway or at the school driveway?
We did. In our report, we noted exactly that concern about queuing, and we did notice a queue of five vehicles waiting to turn left into the prep driveway, not the swim club driveway. There is a shoulder, it is eighteen feet from the center line of Cedar Grove Lane to the curb, that is sufficient width, that allows traffic to bypass. Not everyone does it. It's, it's, you know, it's not, some people think, wow, I can't drive on the shoulder, I'll get a ticket. That's not true. But that aside, we did note five vehicles that were queued, and that's memorialized on the second bullet point on Page Two of our report.
So you're saying it's okay to pass on the right?
It is.
Okay.
The reason is, one, I, I won't bore you with the motor vehicle code, but the motor vehicle code says that a shoulder cannot be used to bypass a vehicle traveling in the same direction, and that's verbatim from the code. As soon as a vehicle stops waiting to make a left turn, that vehicle ceases to be traveling in the same direction, and that vehicles are allowed to bypass on the shoulder. Our office has verified that with DOT, only because, as you might imagine, it comes up during the access review for driveway permits. And quite frankly, you can't put a left-turn lane in for every driveway, whether it's a house, an institutional office, et cetera. So, yes, that's, it, it is legal to do that. But again, by your question, I can understand that not everyone is comfortable with, with that.
I thought it was legal. As long as I have you, the left-hand turn that you were talking about, that people make illegally, you, you mentioned it was, it was minimal?
Twelve, over the course of an hour.
Yeah, one every five minutes. That's acceptable?
I look at it absent the restriction, and, and I look at the pattern of driveways on Cedar Grove Lane, where, where you have intersecting streets, some have signals, some don't. That's why I said before, unless there's a reason, a curve in the road, a sight-distance obstruction, unless there's a reason to prohibit left-hand turns, I don't advocate for it because all it does is it means everyone turns right and goes somewhere else. Sometimes they U-turn in the neighbor's driveway. In this case, they go up to New Brunswick where we have a signal. Why do we want to put more traffic through the signal if we don't have to? But I respect the fact that somewhere in the process, the approval history of this site, it was deemed appropriate to restrict left turns between seven and nine in the morning and four and six in the afternoon. And as, traffic guys look at it purely for safety, and I say, I can't reconcile why at six-fifty-nine it's okay to make a left, but one minute later, it's now illegal. I struggle with that as an engineer. But, but nevertheless, that's, the prohibition is there. I'm not looking to undo it.
Yeah, the sign's there, so that, that's the law, right?
Correct.
Now, what, what is the reason? You were talking about the reason the police couldn't be, they, they went to talk to the police and they sent, who said it wasn't appropriate? Who, who said that?
I, I believe it was the police.
The police.
And I'll have to defer to Mr. Healy in that it, it was a condition of that, and, and I'm going to, here we go. It's on Page Three of Mr. Healy's reports. Forgive me, Mark, if I'm stepping on your domain. Based on the applicant's discussions with the police department, such control was not deemed appropriate. So I don't have the history for that.
Then, Mark, who? Well, let me, my name's been brought up a lot. It's not my report. It's, it's the review of the Technical Review Committee.
Apologies.
So it's, it's, it's the summary of, of, of all staff, including the police and including Darren Massey, who's with CME, our engineering consultant. I'm actually going to defer to Darren because I think as far as the traffic, I think Darren has been a little bit more involved than I have in some of those discussions and probably has a better memory than me. So I'm going to switch over to him and see if he can answer that.
Okay, actually, I did speak with the police.
Do you want to swear a minute?
Oh, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Darren, can you raise your, do you swear the testimony about to give would be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay, when the camp was going into operation, I did speak to traffic safety regarding the need for police, and their response was they wanted to see the camp operate to see if there's any problems before they would assign an officer. So I asked the TRC to look at it. So in that time, I did drive it. The first week or so, there was a couple hiccups, but then I think they kind of got everything in order. So the police determined they didn't need to go out there based off of that.
Okay, so the police determined it. That's, that's what, that was my question.
Would I be available to ask a few questions?
Yeah, I, certainly, you can ask questions or you can continue to discuss what you found.
Okay. Well, just so, for the board's reference, in two thousand and eleven, or, or two thousand and twenty-one, our office did counts before the Dean and Dolan counts, and just to reference, their counts came in pretty similar to ours the following year, maybe a little bit more traffic-intensive. So we found that the counts were suitable for what we were reviewing. In terms of the left turn in the driveway, I know there's been a lot of the discussion. I understand both points, the prohibitions there. Betsy and I actually did have a few conversations about how that could be enforced. I don't want to speak for her, but she had mentioned potentially putting cones up to direct to traffic. I don't know how your thoughts are on that.
Sure. And, and for the board's benefit, you know, is twelve enough to reinvent the wheel? I'll leave that to you. But to, to add an additional, I'll say, reminder to those parents to obey the, the law, cones would be installed in the driveway, we'll say, to channel, to, to direct people to the right, and then, subject to the police department, put cones on the center line so that cars can't punch through, you know, pretend it's almost a Jersey barrier, but it would be effectuated with cones so that unless a parent really wants to disregard the prohibition and start running over cones, that would be, I think, appropriate, given the narrow window of that restriction. So we remind them in the driveway, but then we reinforce it across the double-yellow center line.
Mr. Shepherd, may I just, not in the form of cross-examination, but could I ask Darren some questions for clarity?
I don't see why not.
No, I want, Darren, how are you?
How are you?
Darius, I'm sorry. That's three strikes so far tonight if I don't count. Were you, you're familiar with the TRC report, am I correct?
I am. I was, I also helped put it together as well.
That's what I wanted to hear. Now, in that report, it does suggest that we are, we being the applicant, are negotiating a, an agreement for two thousand and twenty-three with the swim club.
Correct.
And it also says on page, and as I said, this is not cross-examination, this is clarity. It also says on Page Four that if we are unable to obtain cooperation with the swim club, that we would have to go back to the TRC or the board, depending on how it wanted to work, to give them alternative options. Am I correct?
That's my understanding correct.
No, I'm not getting police. I'm not, we're not in a court of law, and, and that's not my intent. So that there is a plan or a program in the TRC report that tells us what to do. my intent. So that there is a plan or a program in the TRC report that tells us what to do if we don't sign an agreement going forward.
Well, let me. Mark over here. Let me interject. I think this whole discussion, I think you're speaking to comment three.
Yes.
What I would suggest is is let's hold off on that because that's that's it. This isn't necessarily what. It does lay out some scenarios for the board to discuss. I would suggest we wait a little bit on that and discuss it in full rather than like piecemeal with questions for.
I'm with you. You, you know, you and Mr. Shepherd will tell me.
Well, I think we'll go over that, you know, kind of where we are, and then the board can make a decision of of, you know, with these scenarios, if they want to retain jurisdiction or possibly defer to TRC. But I think that's a little bit further down.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for an answer, Mark. I mean, I think that the board should know that the applicant would agree with all of the conditions and requirements as articulated by the TRC. I mean, that's my point at this time.
Okay, now, Mr. Mr. Dean, did your traffic report and the work that you and Ms. Dolan did on this matter, did it include taking a close look at at what happens inside the parking lot, how the children make their way from the the Swim Club parking lot to the school?
There are a few connections as I one I saw definitely, and I may, we may need to defer to the applicant. But there's a little footbridge and a means of pedestrian connection between the sites. And and that allows that, we'll say, cross-use to occur safely and in a controlled environment. So we endorse it. We think it's a great way to use, you know, two facilities that, quite frankly, are fairly wholesome in their objectives, serving the children of the community. I think the fact that the applicant went above and beyond the requirements that were initially imposed to have traffic directors on site ensures that things are occurring in a in a very uniform and controlled manner. So we our our report focuses on on traffic movements to and from the highway or the road, if you will. We did not get into a whole lot of detail of, I don't want to call, but for lack of a better term, micromanaging what how what they're doing on site. I don't have any information that tells me that they were doing something improper or wrong. And I don't know if that came up in the in the TRC.
See, when I when I went and visited the property back in, I guess, 2021, maybe 2022, I don't understand what you're saying about a footbridge. Because what the kids were doing was, and the parents, the parents would come with the kids, as I would have if I was had a child or children that were going to this camp, is that they would walk out of the the parking lot, and then they'd have to cross lanes of traffic in the parking lot for the school as the people were driving around the circle to drop their kids off at the curb.
I misunderstood your question. I thought you were asking how they get between the two sites, not traverse the prep property
Right.
to get into the building.
That was what.
I misunderstood.
Right.
My apologies. I did. I did not specifically focus on that concern.
Okay.
I didn't. I'm sorry.
All right. Thanks. That's good to know.
If I may, yes, I want to second Mr. Shepherd's concerns because I was there this afternoon, as I mentioned, at 3:30. I'm a former teacher, retired teacher, and I noticed there was only one footbridge in the middle between the two parking lots. And I personally didn't even. I was parked away from the bridge, and I cut through that small wooded area, okay, which I wasn't supposed to be doing. And here I am, an adult, low adult, low-abiding citizen, right? And the only way for anyone, adult or child, to go from one parking lot to the entrance of the school, they have to traverse two lanes of parking spaces, including this semicircular driveway of the school, and some kind of island in the middle of this circular driveway of the school in order to get to the door.
That's correct.
So the safety issue, especially being that this is a school for up until grade eight, is of extreme concern to me personally.
And and as it was for for the school, and that's why, and I double-checked my notes, they had two personnel in the parking lot that was not a requirement of the temporary approval specifically to assist with controlling traffic on the property itself.
So these are qualified crossing guards?
I I don't.
Similar to what the public schools have?
Sure. I I don't know that they're crossing guards per se, but they are, you know, mature young adults who are employed. They're not. They're not other children who are engaging with parents, monitoring the the travel pattern of children who are being dropped off. Someone's watching it, and I think that's what you want in that type of environment. The layout of the prep is one-way, counterclockwise. So that first crossing in the parking lot is looking to the left for inbound traffic. And then that traffic proceeds and goes around that center island where the angled parking is. And then, as they traverse where that parking occurs, again, they are looking to their right for the one-way traffic that's looped around and is now trying to leave. So it's it's not like trying to cross a busy street. Everything is one-way. It's low speed. It's it's, you know, a very deliberate staging or or circulation through the prep parking lot. So I I that's why we, part of the reasons we endorse the continued use of having those traffic safety personnel for that very reason. Safety first. I mean, this, we know that there are children and vehicles, and we want to have a lot of high visibility.
I do have a question. Was there any issue with traffic for dropping off the staff if they're being dropped off on Cedar Grove and then walking onto the site?
No, no, no. They they were dropped off on the site.
Okay, so there's no drop-off on Cedar Grove?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Yep.
I I had one last question, and I didn't really notice it in the in the report. But ordinarily, when there is additional traffic that is placed on a particularly busy road, there's a there's usually a a finding by the traffic engineer as to what the level of traffic was, either A, B, C, D, or F, before and also during that period of time. Did we have those, that type of information in this report?
We don't have the level of service calculation. That was that was not specifically asked of us, either by the applicant or through the TRC process. I I can state that with most of the traffic, at least in the morning, being directed to turn right with with a left turn prohibition, that results in a very high level of service. I can't tell you, looking at the numbers, is it A, B, C, or D? But I would say it's most definitely C or better, which is, you know, in the
In the grand scheme of things, right.
A to F. C's right in the middle. That's pretty darn good for rush hour. At the Swim Club driveway, where we did have a few more left turns, and I'm looking at the afternoon when that driveway was busier, those delays would be a little bit longer, only because left turns are permitted. And I might expect that to be in the level of service D range, just because there's a little bit more ambient traffic. And with more people making lefts, it it delays. But I wouldn't. And none of this did we see level of service F or anything overly congested or problematic.
Okay, that's all the questions that I have. I thank you for patiently answering them. Does anyone else on the board have any more questions? Darryl, do you have? Do you have something in in addition on this issue that you'd like to talk about?
Just two quick items. I know one of the board members had mentioned staff on Cedar Grove Lane. That's something we had witnessed in 2021, and it was corrected from the camp for the 2022 counts if Dean and Dolan didn't see any. So that's a positive. But the other question I did have, and it was in the TRC report, was I agree that having siblings make multiple trips to the camp is not advantageous. But we were wondering, you know, roughly how many siblings are there? Is it 10% of the camp population? Is it 40%? Because that could greatly affect how these people come in.
Agreed. I don't have the answer to that. So I'm I'm I hear Mr. Stahl trying to get it. But I don't know. In my experience with preschools and and other private schools, that is usually in the 20% range, sometimes a little bit higher. But, you know, there there's a variety of reasons for it. I just don't have the answer.
Well, I think you said the right answer.
20?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions. So I think with respect to the the question about the agreement, I think in previous years, because this has been going on for a little while, I think they have shown agreements for previous years. So I guess the question for Mr. Stahl and through your client, is there one for 2023 in place?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
Okay. That that. So with respect to that's why in the TRC report, that's why we ask, because as of the rating of this report, we had not seen a 2023.
It was being negotiated that time. I will have one for you tomorrow or Monday.
Okay. And then the second question, and this is really a follow-up of one of the board members' questions, you know, how people are getting from the Swim Club into the to the school site, as I think, you know, as indicated in this report, as resulting from an approval that the Swim Club received, portions of their parking lot are going to have to be removed. It stems from the DRCC requiring them to remove some parking for a cell tower application on that site. How does that change how people are going to get from the Swim Club to the school site?
Now, is that for Mr. Dean or for the operator?
Whoever can answer that question.
Darren, are you aware?
I am. I am not aware of the specific design approval for the Swim Club, where the parking spaces that will be eliminated are, and and how to how to address that. So if if we can't get it resolved tonight, I I think, subject to the board's agreement for our office to be able to work with Mr. Massey and Mr. Healy, we'll we'll engineer that, if you will.
The last page of the, excuse me, Mr. Dean, Mr. Dean, the last page of the of the TRC report, the one that was issued January 26, the last page shows the the parking spaces that are. You looking at it?
I know. I see it.
Okay.
That's very helpful. Look at that. So now I see what's being eliminated. And what I don't know is what goes in there in lieu of that. I don't know. I see that it's parking is being eliminated. I don't know if the blacktop will be eliminated.
It's going to be grass after.
Grass. Thank you. So now we would need a footpath that would allow the connection to the footbridge on the prep that that join the two sites. Alternatively, to look at opening up a connection, if you will, deeper into the Swim Club property that would allow, continue to allow the drop-off, and that may allow for a better walking route around the perimeter, if we're all looking at that same exhibit, around the perimeter of the drop-off lane, so we don't have kids cutting through the middle. So I'm making a note on that to see.
Maybe a sidewalk there?
That's that's exactly what I'm thinking, either a sidewalk or a footpath. I'm not always in love with impervious for obvious reasons. But if if we can establish a a walking path, whether it's gravel or mulch or what have you, but but a way to do it that's environmentally sensitive.
Just for clarification, as part of the cell tower application, it's an impervious coverage decrease they're required. So any kind of sidewalk sidewalk you're going to put in is going to negatively impact that. So.
Right. That that's why I'm mindful of that. And and again, footpaths and things that are pervious instead of impervious, given the limited use over the summertime, I think we can come up with a creative way to accommodate those concerns.
And if I may, Mrs. Shepherd and the board, I'm referring to page one of the report, and it indicates that the adjacent property owners agreed not to commence construction of the modifications to their parking lot during the summer of 2022. Should construction backslash demolition of Cedar Hill Swim Club parking lot commence, then the township staff shall be empowered to order cessation of the summer camp. It being intended that the camp must have the availability of the parking or replacement parking that would be constructed to the extent of any removal. And that's part of the issue that I think Mark wanted to discuss at the appropriate time as to who's going to review the future operation.
Excuse me, one more question with regards to this part, the the Swim Club driveway. It's going to be summertime? The swimming pool will be open? The Swim Club will be open? Did your traffic study include trips back and forth of cars to the Swim Club, not to the school? And how would the two be coordinated?
Excellent question. Because the Swim Club was not allowed to make the improvements, I I I assume they weren't operating at the time that we did our counts. So what we counted was for the school, and I don't have an answer to that because we didn't. We didn't collect that data. It wasn't available in 2022.
Did I understand correctly that you're saying they're not going to remove the parking spaces? Or if they do, there has to be a replacement? Because?
The property is not yet being demolished. But if and when the parking lot is removed for construction, and it is not replaced with an equivalent number of spaces, then according to the report, again, that you have to review, the township shall be empowered to order cessation of the summer camp, which is something obviously we're not going to want to do. So we're going to have to make sure that there is parking available at the Swim Club. And we should know that, you know, before the summer starts.
Okay, because I thought the clause in there was to halt removal so that the counts, I mean, you could do the traffic study, not that it was being, it was cessation of it altogether.
Well, that's what the report recommends. But we would, again, as I said before, if if we don't have the sufficient parking, then we have to replace it. That was the certain recommendations on page three of the report of January 26. We always have to have parking available at the Swim Club. If we don't, then we have an issue, and we have to resolve it.
Okay.
I I I wasn't. I spoke in error, too. I was just advised by the applicant that the Swim Club was open last summer. So even though we counted their driveway, and even though their traffic is in our numbers, hopefully that answers your question, is that they were operational. So whatever we counted wasn't exclusively 100%, I don't believe, camp traffic. It included Swim Club traffic.
And let me, if I can ask Darren, Darren, your firm did counts as well?
We did. So it included both Swim Club and in this school. What I did do know is when we did our counts, we went to the Swim Club. It looks like that wasn't their peak operational time when the camp was dropping off. So that's why there wasn't much of a traffic increase from what we were expecting.
Mr. Chairman, but just to remind the board, as I know, Mr. Dean does need to leave at some point. So what I would suggest is let's see if there's any more questions of the board, and then see if there's questions, questions from the public
Yep.
of Mr. Dean.
I agree.
Thank you for the accommodation, by the way.
Are there any more questions from the board? Since there are none, we'll, at this point, we'll open the the hearing to the public. If there's anyone here that would like to make a comment regarding the traffic information provided by Mr. Dean, they're welcome to come up to the podium and speak into the microphone. At this point,
At this point, you're entitled to ask only questions and not give a comment on whether or not you believe this to be an appropriate application. Seeing no one getting up to come to the podium, I'm going to close the public portion of this hearing regarding Mr. Dean's testimony. And Mr. Dean, you're free to go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think would be the appropriate time now is for you to bring on my planner, unless I always defer to you and to Mr. Healy if we want to do anything in the interim. But normally I would put the planner on now. I think that that would be good.
You swear the testimony about to go be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Use the microphone.
Yes, I do.
All right. Please state your name, spelling your last name, please.
My name is Edward, last name is Collin, K-O-L-L-I-N-J.
And please advise the board as to your, your experience, your expertise and what you do now.
Well, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I graduated from Rutgers University in 1974, so I've been kicking around for almost 50 years. I've been licensed for a little bit over 40 years. I've testified before, I believe this board, I have testified in Franklin maybe two, three, four times over the years. And testified throughout the state.
And we'll accept your credentials as a planner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Ed, you, not putting you second fiddle, but originally Mr. O'Brien was to be here and you have on occasion consistently been his backup, am I correct?
That's correct. I've known Kevin for three, three decades at least.
Hey, you know, planners in traffic use these numbers. Now, in preparation for tonight, did you have an opportunity to review the Dolan and Dean Traffic and Operations Plan?
Yes, I did.
And did you have an opportunity to review the TRC planning report? Strike that. The TRC report dated January 26th, 2023?
That's, yes, I did.
And was there any other documents that you reviewed?
I did look, look at the, at the zoning ordinance. I also looked at the master plan for the community facilities element. And I looked, there was a plot plan that had been prepared that showed the, the layout of the property as it exists. I reviewed that and, and looked at the aerial, aerial views and things of that nature.
And your function or your mission tonight is to discuss the advisability under the MLUL of the use of this property as a summer day camp, is that correct?
Right. I was going, I looked at it from the planning perspective as to the proofs necessary for the grant of a use variance under the municipal land use law.
All right, ahead.
So I will jump pretty much right into that. There's a few just overview things that I want to mention is that the zone district is an R40 district. The school that's there now is a permitted conditional use. It had been the subject of some previous approvals. Student count there was up to 330 students from the information I reviewed. The proposed use is a summer day camp, which will require the use variance. It will operate on the school property during their summer session, where then they're out of session more or less. And it would be limited to 280 children. And looking at the proposed day camp, I would offer that the use is not really that dissimilar in terms of its purpose in a way to, say, childcare. And although this use is not necessarily an inherently beneficial use, I would like to point out that the legislature has recognized that childcare types of uses are beneficial and provide a needed service to working parents. And if you look at municipal land use law, where they talk about family daycare and childcare centers, you'll, you would see how they have arrived at that conclusion. The day camp also provides some services that I would say are similar to a school in terms of, say, physical education, social interaction opportunities, science and nature activities and things of that nature. So there are some similarities and I think that they are compatible. The school property is rather large, it's about eight and a half acres. And the day camp will utilize the same facilities that already exist on the property. And for these reasons, I believe that this illustrates the property is particularly well-suited for the proposed use, which is one of the things that we have to present in terms of showing that we meet the, the criteria for the granting of the use variance. The proposed use is, will promote certain of the goals of the community facilities element of the master plan, one of which is to provide adequate services to meet the needs of the township. And the other states that to share services to the extent possible. I would say that the proposed day camp will provide what I see as a needed childcare type of service in the community and will provide this service by sharing an existing facility, meaning the school, within the community. So because of the particular suitability of the property, I also believe that the, the application will advance certain, certain purposes of the municipal land use law. And this would include 40,55D-2, subparagraph A, which is to encourage the municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. I believe that the granting of the variance would, would be a municipal action which will guide what I see as an appropriate use of the school property and will provide a beneficial use to promote the general welfare. Also, subparagraph G, which talks about providing sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of different uses in order to serve the needs of the, of New Jersey citizens. The property is rather large, so I think it has sufficient space. And I believe it's in an appropriate location to provide the type of use being proposed and provide the services to the community. Another subparagraph is subparagraph M, which talks about encouraging coordination of various public and private procedures and activity shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and the more efficient use of the land. I think that the proposed use of the property does promote that because we're providing for an additional use of the facility that would otherwise stand primarily empty and it can provide a beneficial use at that same location and therefore provide a more efficient use of the land. So I think that we have met the positive criteria in terms of being able to grant the use variance. Now, in terms of the negative?
Oh, I'm sorry, Greg.
In terms of the negative criteria, we have to look at both, would there be a substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan? And I do not believe that that would be the case.
Wait, now wait, wait, that you're kind of rolling through different types of law and generalized aspects of this. What I want you to focus on is keeping in mind that, that the school is there on the basis of a, a conditional use. And this is zoned R40 in this area.
Yes.
How do you see the, the existence of a, a summer camp? Not a school, but a summer camp in the middle of an area that is zoned R40?
Well, I think that having a, a day camp such as, such as this is appropriate in a residential area because it provides a sort of a, a childcare type of use. Who uses childcare? Residents. People who live in homes. It's, it's geared towards providing care for, for children so that, you know, who else would it serve but, but residents? So being in a residential area, I think, is not, not inconsistent. And that's what I was going to go into in terms of the negative criteria, that you, a school, childcare, I think, a day camp, which is the type of childcare, I think are consistent with the, the R40 zone, with the resident, with a residential district. And I think that they provide services to, to residents.
Don't you think that if, if it was consistent, as you're saying, that it would have been listed as, and also the same type of conditional use that the school has? That they've made a decision here that this is not an appropriate use for an R40 zone? That's why you're arguing in favor of a D variance, right?
That, that is correct.
Yeah.
And that's actually one of the, one of the other, the enhanced level of proof that you would go through in terms of the Medici, Medici case as to why was this use left, left out here? If it was, if it was the intent or if it's suitable to, for it to be here? Well, I would, I'd point out, going through the zoning code and going through all the different districts, I didn't see the mention of a day camp anywhere in the zone. So I don't think it's something that was considered at all. So therefore you need to look at, at the area in general, I would say, and say, well, notwithstanding the fact that it wasn't mentioned in the code, would this be an appropriate location? And I think that it is an appropriate location because of the size of the property being eight and a half acres, the fact that the school is there, whether or not this use is there. The school is more or less laying dormant and could be put to a productive use. And a productive use that in my mind provides a, a beneficial aspect, that being childcare for, for working parents. And I think that that's a highly beneficial use.
I may ask a couple of questions on this subject. When it's a school, it is used indoor activities and indoor education, am I correct?
Primarily, yes.
And, but schools also have physical education and outdoor activity. That is a, and I have, you know, I have a teacher here, I'm not using her. My whole family are, are teachers. But they also have outside activities, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Now, I have a school, I have a camp. Some of the camp uses some of the indoor facilities, especially on rainy days, is that correct?
Yes, I would assume they would use the gymnasium, they would use cafeteria facilities or the classrooms in order to have programs.
And then they have outdoor activities.
Correct.
Now, again, I don't want to get in trouble. During the, the horrible COVID pandemic that we had, one of the issues with not sending children to schools was not just missing education and the socialization interaction, but it also was a, a huge problem for working parents. Because now the children, and that's not what education is for, is to be a babysitter. But it was one of the ancillary functions that there was, the school became the parent, in lieu of the parent during the eight to three, am I correct?
Yes, yes, you, you're right. It's not to provide, the school is not to be a babysitter. But in practice, it does allow for the parents to be able to go to work and to have, have dual incomes and et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Just because of the, how the hours overlap.
And that was a problem that many people in our country experienced with COVID.
Yes.
And rather publicized. And to the same extent now that fortunately COVID's gone, the schools are back operating, providing all their services. And this camp can also provide, as you've indicated, call it daycare, call it education, call it whatever you want, it provides an alternate for parents to be able to work and have a, a safe place to send their children, am I correct?
Exactly. That's exactly my point.
And that's not inconsistent with the permitted conditional use of a school, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have not located, and if you're wrong or I'm wrong, Mr. Healy will remind us, you do not know in which zones, if any, in the, in this township, there is a day camp as a permitted use, is that correct?
That is correct.
Give them back to you, Mr. Shepherd.
Okay. Now, and I'm sorry, I, I've forgotten your name.
My first name is Ed, last name is Collin. Coll, Collin, like Collin.
Collin, okay. Mr. Collin, are you aware that there have been numerous noise complaints? There's been people have come and testified to the fact that there are, there's a lot of noise complaints associated with this particular day camp?
I, I have not been aware of any noise, noise complaints. However, in reading the report, I did note that the TRC recommended that amplification not be used and I assume it was to address issues of noise traveling offsite.
Okay. So does the, does the existence of these people who have complained about the noise coming from the, the camp change your opinion at all as to whether or not this is an appropriate use of space in an R14, in an R40 zone?
It, it, it does not because of the TRC report and, and their recommendations. I was addressing the, the substantial detriment to the zone plan. I think our, our discussion now has, has covered that pretty well. But the next prong, as you're pointing out, is to determine if there would be substantial detriment to the public good or the general welfare. And I think when the board looks at that, they can look at, are there measures that can be taken? Mitigation that can be done that would lessen the impact? And some of the things that have been brought up in the TRC report in which the applicant has been, has agreed to comply with would be things such as not using outdoor amplification, the ideas of further restrictions on, say, turning movements or, or, or access, vehicular access and pedestrian access. So that if you take the mitigative acts, measures that have been recommended by the TRC and if they are implemented and agreed to by the applicant, then the mitigation, in my opinion, would reduce the impacts to, to the point where they would not result in a substantial detriment. And therefore, we would have, we would meet the negative criteria in terms of impact on the public good.
Okay. Does anyone else on the board have any questions for this, Mr. Collin? Seeing no one, I now will open the hearing to the public and ask if anyone that's here tonight would like to come up and ask Mr. Collin any questions regarding his testimony. Seeing no one approaching the microphone, I will close this portion of the hearing to the public. So now, is that your last witness? Is that your?
Yes, sir. That is the last witness I have. And my only further statement will be that, you know, depending upon what this board wants to do, the applicant is fully prepared to accept the, you know, whatever this board will determine as conditions to the operation of the camp as were recommended in the, the TRC report.
Okay. Well, let me ask you a couple of questions as the attorney representing the applicant here. One of the things that troubles me about this case, and, and it has more to do with the, with the applicant than it does to do with any of the, of the, the features of the, the building, is that the license that we gave them last year limited the number of kids that they could have to 280. But after that was done, it turned out that they were using this particular facility to, as a pickup spot for kids who were going to another camp that Mr., that Mr. Smith operated. And how am I going to, how am I going to control that, that issue of keeping the number of people going to school there at, at, at 280? What's a good way to, how do I do that? When you have someone who obviously didn't follow the rule that was in that license that we had?
And I cannot defend that, nor will I, but I, you asked me how to do it and I would suggest the following. Whoever is going to have the jurisdiction, whether it's Mr. Healy, the TRC, a subcommittee of this board, I would suggest that we are, we, the applicant, be required on a monthly or biweekly basis to provide a census of the attendees at the camp, a full census, which would indicate no more than 280. I would also further require them to provide a census as to periodic traffic and, and a certification that it will not be used as a hub, it will not. And if it is, that they can be closed within a five or seven day period. And just make it rough, not, you know, not, well, we'll give you seven days if we catch you. Oh, you'll come back in and say, okay, you caught us.
Right. That's what my, that's what my concern is.
I, I hear it.
Right.
I'm not arguing with you. But I think you put some rather heavy controls on it that say, you don't get it.
But you see, what he did was he circumvented the whole problem because these, these people that were coming in these, these people that were coming in and being transported to someplace else, they're not gonna show up on somebody's roster as to who's attending school, they're not.
No, I agree, and that's why I'm saying that you're gonna get a certification that, and, and we can have a periodic certification to the police department, to Mr. Healy, I don't wanna make work for people, and part of that effort-
But you are, of course, but that's okay.
No, no, but that might be incorporated with a, a fee, a hundred, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Not to give it to Mr. Healy, he's a professional, but to compensate the town. I think there's a remedy.
Yeah.
I'm, you may know more than I, I thought that the bus issue with regard to the hub occurred before and then was terminated, I think here's, I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah.
I learned that from the, from the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
If, in fact, the, the trust was broken, the trust was broken, am I, then we have to reinstate the trust.
Yeah. Yeah, I have another question for you and for my counsel here. One of the things that I, that I know is that when you grant a variance, that the variance then runs with the land.
Yes.
Right, correct, right? See, I was a lawyer in my former life, but not this kind of lawyer. I did patent, trademark, and copyright law, but I learned a little bit along the way.
So you're an engineer also?
No, no, never drove a train in my life. Now, now, can you, if someone does not abide by the terms of their variance, can that variance be extinguished somehow? Can, in other words, can you have it be like a self-executing extinguishment? For example, if they, let's use, let's use an egregious issue, let's not use the crazy stuff with the swimming pool company, right? Let's just use this, using this as a, using this space as a, as a hub for another thing. Can we say, can, you too, can we say that, that if they do that, that their, that their variance is extinguished?
Well, here, here's my recommendation, submit to Mr. Regan. A, if you approve this, if we satisfy the conditions, we would get a CO, a certificate of occupancy. That CO, I submit, would have conditions on the CO. It would say A, B, C, hours of operation, total numbers, no hub, this, that, however Mr. Healy wants to construct it. Now, your question is, and I, I can't, let us assume they violate it. Well, if they violate it, they're not gonna permanently lose the CO. A, it can be revoked by Mr. Healy, now I can't use the camp, he'll issue summonses against the camp, summons have to go to municipal court. I think you have a, I think you have hard responses to a violation by the camp.
Without, without, without completely obliterating the variance that was granted. In other words, there'll be a, there's the intermediate step of, of the camp having to get a CFO before they can, they can operate the camp. Do they have to get a CFO, Mr. Healy?
And I'll give you something else, Mr. Shepherd, because you, and I want to be totally transparent, the variance runs with the land.
Right.
But the variance is limited by the conditions you put on.
Right.
So if I sell it, and there's no plan to sell it, and a highfalutin operator comes in and starts to violate it, they're gonna be subject to the same conditions.
See, this is another one of my concerns with the whole thing. I see, and again, I'm having trouble remembering names now, but I see the young lady that came up that you spoke to before that runs the school, and also Mr. Galen Smith, these are very clever people. They have, they have figured out how to, how to do all these things, run a school, run a camp, right? And the, they, they sell, one of them sells, well, he sells this day camp to somebody else, and he sells it to somebody that's not anywhere near as clever as he is. And they then get into all kinds of problems. But, and that's one of my concerns, is that since it runs with the land, you can't, it's like a fire you can't put out.
But the same problem, and I'm not looking for an amen for Mr. Regan, the same problem we have for any variance, let us assume you get, you get a variance to have a shoe store, okay? You have a shoe store, and it's a variance. All of a sudden, some type body comes along and says, I'm not selling shoes, I'm gonna sell, and I don't, I'm gonna sell guns, I'm licensed to sell guns, or worse, I'm gonna have a, and I don't, I'm gonna have a go-go lounge, or something obnoxious. Well, that ain't gonna work, because the approval you're granting is for one thing and one thing only. It's a summer day camp, it's from June to August, whatever the times are, so nobody else is gonna get it unless they're stupid enough to try and change the variance and come back here to, to do something else. So whoever buys it, whether they're as smart as Galen or not, they're subject, we have it all the time, when we sell either strip centers or stores, you know, what's the new use? Well, they gotta go to the zoning officer, A, to get permission that it is a permitted zoning use, and then they've gotta go, and I, Mark, I don't know whether we have tenancy approval, they also have to put a tenancy approval.
Yep.
To transfer the use.
So, so that-
So the question of whether they need a CO, honestly, that, I, you're right that if there's a new, you know, pizza store replaces a shoe shop in a, in a, in a, in a shopping center, they need a CO and they need a zoning approval. Whether a, using this, the school as a day camp, I don't know if that changes the use from a, from a, from a construction code perspective. So I can't answer whether they need a CO in that particular situation. What I can tell you is they do need zoning approval, and frankly, that's why they're here. Again, it's not a permitted use, so they're seeking a D variance, D one use variance from the zoning board. You know, again, ultimately, I'll defer to Frank on the, on the question of, of how specific, you know, if the board was inclined at the end of the hearing to approve it, my suggestion and request to the board would be to make it as specific as, as possible. The more specific you make it, the more-
Enforceable.
More enforceable it is.
Enforceable, and I agree with that, and I agree, and I'm not opining, because with all respect, I, I, I respect Mark, and I've known him a long time, and if he says something, I usually don't argue with him, usually. But I'm not so, assuming there's not a CO, I got a resolution that Frank is gonna prepare that's gonna list all the conditions. If there's a violation, that resolution, I submit, is as good as a CO. I will also tell you, I will not object to the issuance of a document akin to a CO that puts the same conditions, because I want the board to, you know, look, we come back here, I wanna be transparent, reinstate the trust, so someone's gonna have to prove that they're not gonna violate it again. And I yell at my clients a lot, and if they do it, don't come crying to me, you know, you see with the language, either comply-
Either comply-
Or be punished.
Mr. Chairman, just, I, I mean, I think Mr. Stahl and, and Mr. Healy, I think, answered your questions in a number of different ways, but ultimately, yes, I mean, there, there, you know, any approval that may be granted by the board is subject to the terms and conditions of that approval, and if the applicant does not comply with those terms and conditions, then the option is, you know, enforcing that approval and the terms and conditions via the issuance of a violation notice, a summons. The tricky part here is we're talking about a two-month use on an annual basis, and, you know, the, the, the violation and summons process and getting a, before even a municipal judge, you know, it's, it's not a quick process. So in the event that the applicant does violate something during the summer, it may not be easy to enforce. Obviously, it can be enforced subsequently for, for subsequent years, you know, and, and the idea of something similar to a certificate of occupancy on an annual basis to ensure that they comply with any of the terms and conditions might be a good idea, and the applicant seems to be willing to consent to that.
Frank, for you, for Mr. Shepherd, you and Mark, I mean, assuming there's a violation, there could be a stop, well, I don't know, could there not be a stop order, Mark?
Well, I think, I think, I think-
I'm trying to give key to Mr. Shepherd.
Oh, I mean, the reality is, I mean, yeah, certainly, if, if, if you're in violation of, if your client's in violation of the approval, they'd be given a zoning violation, and frankly, the zoning violation will say you need to cease immediately. But then we run into the realistic scenario of they have an operating day camp, and then-
I know, I understand.
Then, then, then it's going to court and the season's over.
Yeah, because Mark doesn't have the authority as the zoning officer to, to essentially come and shut you down.
I can't knock down the door.
They get an order from the judge, from the court to do that.
But the answer is, Frank and Mark and board, if you do that, where am I gonna be next year? Let's say I violate it over that two-month period, and I, I breach my trust again, and the board, and Mark says, oh, you're done, you know, we're gonna go and we're gonna, we're gonna just terminate the CO because of your violation. So am I gonna risk that? I submit, I don't think, and I, you know, I know these clients, I don't think they'd risk it.
As I had said, I think enforcing something, because of the limited nature of this use to two months a year, enforcing violations that occur in that year, I think may be challenging from a timing perspective.
I agree.
Obviously, subsequently, for subsequent years, I think then there's an opportunity for, for the township to potentially, you know, you know, enforce the terms and conditions of an approval and potentially shut the daycare, or not let the daycare, the day camp operate subsequently.
And the day, and the daily fines, that could be significant.
That's true, too.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Don't talk too much.
You do talk a lot, but I don't think you talk too much, okay. Now, I think what we want to do, well, what I think we should do at this point is to prepare a resolution.
Want to open it to the public?
Oh, 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 thank you very much. This is the point at which anybody in the audience can come up and get to the microphone and express their opinion on whether or not this is a, a good, a good, a good variance, a good use of the property as they're requesting, and say whether or not they think the, this applicant should get the variance that they're seeking. Would anybody like to come up and say something? Now, does he have to be sworn in here?
Errol Swearman, if you can raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You can give us your name, please, and address.
My name is Mark Maris. I live at 179 Wilson Road, Somerset.
I'm sorry, is that adequate for you?
I live at 179 Wilson Road, here in Somerset, I've been a resident Somerset here for twenty-one years. My daughter is an attendee at the Cedar Brook Day Camp and has been since its inception. She has excelled because of the nurturing and learning environment provided by the Cedar Brook Day Camp during those summer months. She's just started high school as a freshman, she's a varsity letter person on the field hockey team, earned Rookie of the Year honors, and is an honor student at Franklin High School, partially because of the nurturing environment that she has experienced at the Cedar Brook Day Camp. I'm a member of the Cedar Hill Club, the swim club that you speak of, and in the process of attending that club, as well as the adjoining property and drop-off of my daughter, I have never experienced any issues with the traffic control. I have personally witnessed Cedar Brook staff controlling the traffic flow on a regular basis in the morning and in the afternoon, and adequately moving clientele in and out of the parking lot in a safe manner. The utmost importance for Mr. Smith and the camp is child safety. His staff has been consummate in observing child safety in and around that environment, and for this board to do anything less but approve this variance would be a disservice not only to the community, but to all of the children and parents and families that rely on this service over the course of those summer months. This entity, since its inception in 2017, has provided more than its share of a learning environment, an activity environment, and a nurturing environment for those children that are attending. And I implore this board to pass in favor of this variance, so that this type of activity and this safe environment for our children remains in force. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to get up and say something?
Hello, board, my name is Jeremy Smith, I live at 5 Corn-
Good, no finish.
I live at 5 Cornelius Way, Somerset.
Can you raise your right hand?
Yes, I can.
You swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So again, I'm Jeremy Smith, I live on 5 Cornelius Way, Somerset, New Jersey. I have two children, twin boys, they're seven, they go to Cedar Hill Prep and they go to the camp, and I have to agree with everything that I-
Mark, correct?
That Mark said, for traffic, for, for walking across the parking lot, which you're concerned about. They do have two people there during the camp, and they have one person in the, the other parking lot, and every time I take my children back and forth, they will stop traffic, my kids can come, I, I could let my kids go by themselves, I feel that comfortable, I don't, because I'm a helicopter parent, but, but I could. In regards to education for the camp that people were talking about, I think my children have become more open because of the camp. They've, you know, learned how to talk to people better, they've learned how to swim, they've learned how to do so much stuff because of the camp. So I see it more as a school than a camp, if you were looking for similarities. Aside from that, I don't know, every time I've gone there, yes, there's noise, but the noise is children laughing, children having fun, dancing to music, and the camp's not open all night, so there's no noise at night, it's during the day. So I feel like if, you know, noise complaints are children having fun, then that's, that's kinda sad. I think that's all I have, though. I think it's, it's definitely, you guys should approve it, I couldn't imagine taking my kids somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Gotta speak into the microphone.
Dennis Aklari, I live at 151 Cedar Grove Lane.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You know, I want, first of all, I wanna say I have no issue with the school being there, they've been good neighbors as, as many years that they've been there and they've operated. But as far as this, the, the camp goes, it does create quite a bit of traffic issues during the summer. You know, people coming in and out, traffic queues up in front of my house, people come along, you know, to shoulder, to get around the traffic. I think traffic control is a very big issue there, you know, at the peak out, at, you know, at, at the morning operating hours, the afternoon operating hours, and it's a big concern. Living there, I see, see the issues, you know, certainly, there's a lot of noise coming from it above and beyond what I think's reasonable, but I live with it because most of the year they're good neighbors. But also, this, the board's gotta be aware of what you're doing. You're creating, this is a land lease you're creating for a short period of time, so what you're doing is you're taking a school use and you're, you're granting a business use in a residential area, and you need to be aware of that. So there's gotta be some strict guidelines that they adhere to.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to make a statement or comment? Okay, well, then we'll close this portion of the, of the hearing. Does anybody wish to, on the board, wish to say anything before we try and hammer out a, an appropriate variance?
I'd like to say something, I, I think a camp is a good use, I understand it is in a residential area. My biggest concern or input is that we provide sufficient conditions that this use can be managed for current use and also look- for current use and also looking at future, um, owners of this, uh, operation. I think that's key.
I agree.
Okay, uh, I have a comment. You know me a long time, Jim. It's me, me, Gary. You know me a long time and, uh, I understand what the, what these two individuals have said about, about the child and everything else. My concern, even though I, I, I look at the TRC and everything else, I'm still concerned about the relationship between the camp, the school, and the swim club. I, I, I am not convinced that is a good partnership and I'm still concerned about that. And probably because of that, I am not going to support this.
I would also like to add, um, that, um, as a retired educator, I definitely see the positive, um, impact, um, and the positive aspects for the public good of having a summer camp, um, operate, even if it is a conditional use. Um, I'm very concerned about the negative impact, um, again, um, the relationship with the, um, with the swim camp. It seems like it's on an annual renewal basis. Uh, that concerns me because that could change from one year to the next. And, um, and so that creates a big problem for, uh, dropping off and picking up students. And also, um, I'm not sure that we established here tonight that public safety, and I mean the traffic safety, is, is, um, safeguarded, in a sense that, um, e- even the left turn that is now prohibited, I, I see that as, as a positive. It's a very busy intersection, uh, as a, as a, as a driver, um, in that area. Um, I think the intersection with, uh, what is it, New Brunswick? Is, is, uh, too close by for cars to be making a left, whether they are doing so legally because the signs are theoretically can be taken away by the police or whether people just violate that restriction. Um, it's an extremely busy intersection. And also, the, even if everything stays as is and we do have an annual renewal, um, of the use of the, uh, of the pool club parking, uh, with the elimination of these parking spaces, um, I drew a line across and the parking spaces that are to be eliminated are directly across from the school parking. So, that means that the parents are going to have to drive further down into the, uh, the swim club driveway drop off their kids, in which case the kids are going to be at the very edge of the school property and having to walk that wooded area, um, although I understand that there are staff there in order to go to the, to the, to, to the entrance. So, I, I, I am concerned about the whole traffic issue for the driving public, uh, but also, and most particularly, for young children. Thank you.
I have a question, uh, Chairman, and also for Mr. Regan. So, um, I guess last year it was a conditional approval and I guess prior to that, when it was operating, it was not under all the proper permits. And given that there were some issues last year with, uh, you know, with more traffic than was expected and everything, is that something we can consider, is to grant another temporary approval? Like, for another year and see how it goes? Or because the application is for a permanent, uh, approval, is that all we can consider?
Yes. I, I, I mean, the, the temporary use permit was something that, uh, that we came up with as a way to, um, address the application being considered so close to the camp starting, uh, and there was obvious concerns expressed by the Board and we saw it as an opportunity, uh, for the Board's professionals as well as the applicant's professionals to assess, you know, how, how the camp operated, what the traffic was, so that they could present that information to you this evening for your consideration. So, what you're considering is, is the use variance, which is really what they were obligated to apply for at the outset. So, you don't have the option.
You don't have the option. Okay. To me, this was an experiment with somewhat mixed data, so it'd be worthwhile to do the experiment again, but...
Okay, if, unless there's someone else that would like to make a comment. Mark, would you have, like, to say anything?
Well, the only thing I would say is, as far as what your, your options are, um, I mean, obviously, there's, there's, well, I think there's three different options and Frank, you can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, obviously, you could either, you know, approve it with conditions. Um, the TRC report has a number of conditions. You could feel that you're, you haven't been, uh, that, that they haven't provided you the, uh, adequate proofs and you can deny it. The other thing is you could, if, if you felt there were some, um, additional information that you needed, you could also not make a decision and discuss whether you need additional information in order to make that, you know, final decision, one way or the other. I don't know, Frank, if you have anything else.
I think you're right. Um, as to the last one, the only issue is, is, as, as happened last year is we begin to, to run up against, um, timeframes when the school starts to operate and depending upon what kind of information, additional information you may want, um, that may not be possible.
Well, I, I, I would have-
But I agree that there's-
I would have to assume, just based on, you know, on, I think, other comments, I would have to assume that the Board, if that option was to be pursued, that they would have to come back immediately. It's not going to get kicked down the, down the road like it was last time.
And just before Mr. Chairman, I, obviously, I, I understand, um, a motion may be forthcoming, but, and just to emphasize for everyone again, um, depending on what the motion is and what your vote is, whether it's to support that motion or not to support that motion, I would request that you just put your reasons for your vote on the record. Thank you.
Great. Okay, yes. I also agree with, uh, Mr. Regan and Mr. Healy, but if the Board were to, uh, because we don't want to kick the can down the road, because the road is going to be a long road. If the Board were to say, this is our primary issue, if it is or it isn't, I mean, we could come back in two weeks or the next and bring an agreement and bring some additional information with regard to the swim club parking. Is it going to be there? Is it not going to be there? If it's not going to be there, where is a replacement? Where will the parking be? I mean, I know there are some other considerations, but if that is the real issue, uh, one of the central issues and we'll, we'll get that information. Or the Board can, uh, vote up or down, and if it's up, they can put conditions. If it's down, we lose. Or we come back in a short time with information that you want. I think I'm going to try to put together a resolution and, um, then people can either talk about it or, or we can have a vote. But, uh, let me start with something that, um...
Before you, can I ask one question to Mr. Regan?
Oh, sure.
Um, if this is approved, the, it would be predicated on the fact that they have to use the neighboring property for drop-off. If that lease was not renewed and they can, wanted to continue to use that property as a day camp, would that be considered an expansion of a non-conforming use?
Well, if, if, I mean, I, obviously, the applicant is, the application that they have presented includes the swim club, using the swim club property, um, to support the daycare, uh, the day camp, um, and, you know, 280 students. If, and, and from what we, the testimony that's been presented by the applicant, that lease is renewed on an annual basis. You know, o- obviously, if the Board was to approve this, um, the condition would be that they have to produce, and I think the TRC report talks about producing something by a certain date, a number of items, and I think the, the lease would be one of those. And if they don't produce that lease, then they can't operate the day camp. And they, or they could come back to the Board for, to, to reduce, you know, the scope of the, of the day camp, to obviously your satisfaction.
Okay, so it's not just, uh, so physical property that the day camp is associated with. It's the neighboring property, too?
It's in conjunction with the neighborhood property, absolutely.
Well, that's what I was going to say, Mr. McCannick. If, if I don't have parking, I don't have an operation.
That was my concern.
I, I mean, I don't think I can come back and, and look Mr. Shepherd in the eye and say, well, we don't have the parking. Can we use it for 189 kids? I, I, I'm going to tell you right now, that's not the plan. The plan is either we have the parking or we don't have the parking. Okay, so, uh, I move that we grant Cedar Hill Holdings LLC a de-variance to allow it to operate a summer day camp at 152 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset, Block 424.12, Lot 6.03, in the Zone R40, subject to the following limitations and conditions. Uh, number one, the number of children attending the camp shall not exceed 280. The, uh, facility located at 152 Cedar Grove Lane shall not be utilized as a bus hub for any other camp operated by the applicant, uh, at, in Piscataway or any other off-site location. The camp may only be permitted to have one overnight event each year. The, uh, the applicant shall not use any outdoor public address system or amplified music at any time. The applicant shall propose a method, other than by police enforcement, to eliminate the legal, illegal left turns from the parking lot. If the town, next, if the Township Police Department determines traffic safety and public safety is compromised by the operation of the summer camp and is deemed a hazard to the police department, but a hazard, the Township Police Department may order that the summer camp be shut down until such times as appropriate steps can be taken to satisfy the address, and satisfactorily address such safety concerns and hazardous conditions to the satisfaction of the Township Police Department.
Do you have the parking?
I can't read it. I can't read it.
It's hard to read the color.
Yes, I, I'll read that.
Yeah, highlight with yellow next time, buddy, okay?
Okay, full time. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm taking my glasses off and putting it right to, to my face. No later than February 1st of the respective year, the camp must submit a yearly camp operation report to the Township Zoning Department for the review and approval of the TRC, which shall demonstrate applicable requirements of the Board approval, including but not necessarily limited to traffic, to the traffic operation plan consistent with the Board's approval, compliance with the recommendations in the final operations report prepared by the applicant's traffic engineer revised 12/8/22, yearly proof of the swim club that there is an agreement for the camp to, uh, utilize their parking lot that year and that construction will not occur during the camp's operating schedule, and proof each year that the number of campers does not exceed 280. So, this is, that mechanism would be, uh, again, that would be, that they would have to basically submit before February 1st of every year, a plan to the TRC, um, demonstrating that they're going to be operating it that year, consistent with your approval.
Can I have a question, Mark? Mr. Shepherd? And I don't, um, assuming, and I don't assume this, that, uh, the resolution will be passed on past February 1st. So, I assume- That means there's a summer camp this summer. I'm sure, Mark, would-
I, I, well, I, I would think that, you know, considering the date that it is right now, that, um, if the Board was to, to approve it, you would need to get this in ASAP and maybe that's something that you might put in the resolution. Maybe they have, let's say, March 1st. They have to get it to us by, you know, three weeks, or three weeks.
How about April 1st? Yeah. Yeah, for this year only. Yeah.
I'd like to also add, um, with regards to the parking, um, the B states, uh, that construction will not occur during the operation. But are we saying, I think we need to say that the parking needs to be, there needs to be sufficient parking to support operations of the camp. Because this is just saying, no construction will occur during the camp.
Yeah, I think what, what you want to say is, I mean, obviously, that construction may occur at some point and when it does, that parking's going to be eliminated on the swim, on the swim club lot and therefore then the applicant, I think, needs to produce and maybe work with, with Mark's office in coming up with, um, an appropriate realignment of that parking lot. If you follow?
That just addresses the construction, not the eventual-
If the construction occurs, those 73 parking spaces are going to go away.
Right.
And it's going to change the way the parking lot is, is utilized to drop off and pick up students as well as their access to the school. So, that needs to be addressed by the applicant in consultation with, with Township.
Yep.
One thing, it says, it says here that they have to provide yearly proof. Then it says, from the swim club. I guess yearly proof of an agreement with the swim club is what-
Right, which is separate from the parking. If the parking gets removed, then that's an issue. So, I wanted to separate that. One is the agreement, that they have agreement to use the parking. The other is addressing whether or not the parking, those 73 or however many, would be removed for that other application.
Yeah, I think that speaks to another comment in the TRC report that we didn't get to in that there was, um, we offered a few scenarios where if, for example, the, they, they weren't able to produce, the, uh, agreement in a particular year or if, um, those parking spaces were to go away, the question to the Board, and frankly, I didn't bring it up because I, I kind of, just by the Board's conversation, I thought the Board was going to want to retain jurisdiction of that. But the question was, if, for example, they can't use the parking lot that particular year, would you feel comfortable deferring to the TRC? If they could provide a plan, um, that was no more or, or less impactful from a traffic study, a traffic perspective, um, that they could work out a plan with the TRC? Um, and we cite in there, for example, they can't use the swim club, but they find a, um, a site on World's Fair Drive and the parents drop the kids off at World's Fair Drive and they, and they shuttle bus the kids in. Um, you know, if the sc- scenario like that popped up, would you feel comfortable, um, deferring to the TRC? Or if any of these scenarios pop up, no, you want to be the, you want them to come back here? That, so that was-
Yeah, that's item three on page four of the TRC report.
Yeah, I was assuming, honestly, I was assuming, just based on the conversation, I was assuming that the Board, um, would want to retain jurisdiction if those parking spaces, um, uh, if they can't use the parking lot at all. But, yeah, I think we, we, you know, TRC would be willing if the Board wanted to and we laid out some scenarios and, you know, requiring escrow, requiring them to produce traffic studies, you know, so that they can, you know, prove to the TRC that the traffic le- levels are actually going to be less. You know, I would think if, again, if they have to shuttle them in, it's only going to be a few buses as opposed to the number of cars that would be operating now. And then obviously, if the TRC wasn't comfortable, we would say no and you'd, they'd come back to you anyway. But that's a discussion for you to have, uh, and if you are comfortable, we lay out some scenario, some recommendations for that. I would recommend them come back.
I'm going to say the same.
Back here?
Yeah, to the zoning board.
Yeah.
I'm going to say the same.
Yeah, and I've only mentioned, again, we mentioned in here, prior to the hearing, we put it out there for your discussion. So obviously, it's completely up to the board.
And there were three scenarios where you, what you recommended, which was the swim club lot is not available due to the construction in the swim lot, swim club lot. B, that the operator fails to obtain the authorization to use the swim club lot. Then you had three traffic backups along Cedar Grove Lane.
Yeah, above that, beyond...
I don't know who would, yeah.
So, again, I think if the board retains jurisdiction of these, which again, seems to be the way the board is heading, then they would still have to, that language that I read in, they would still have to submit that report to the TRC to prove to us that they're going, that they have the approval for that year, you know, and basically reiterate to the TRC, and prove to the TRC that they're going to operate consistent with your approval. If they don't, then again, they would be sent back to you.
I might suggest something else, too. And I mean, I think this may be an obvious one, but, and just, but so that it's clear to the applicant that the township would have the right, township employees would have the right to visit the site without notice during its operation over the two-month period, to count heads if that was something they, you know, if people were complaining that, you know, that there was more traffic there than normal, to ensure that essentially they're complying with the conditions that might be imposed by an approval.
Sure. I just have one question, Frank, and I think it's a good idea. I just, I think it would be, I like the idea of without notice, so no one can prepare the site. But I would like it, to the extent you can put in the resolution that it would be quietly done. I would not want the kids to be concerned that if they saw code enforcement with badges or...
Or SWAT team, right.
Yeah, I think that, I would agree that they could, the township would need to use discretion in undertaking that site visit.
You know, I don't want to scare the kids. And if this were approved, and all of a sudden, three, six-foot-three guys come in from code enforcement or from the police department, you know, with their sidearms, and all of a sudden, everyone's saying, "What's going on? What's going on?" I said, "That's all I care about." Thank you. Another suggestion, if I may, the chairman. Because I want to make sure that some of the concerns of either the board members or the public, we've got the police, if they find it unsafe, we have the, including left-hand turns, we have the issue of alternate methods to get kids on. I think that's, I think having the board, having the jurisdiction to review those issues that Mark may bring to you, I think those are the answers that may satisfy a lot of people.
I think procedurally, there was a motion made, and I think there've been a few additions to that motion.
Yeah, all the little conditions.
Frank, do you want to, do you have notes, did you keep notes of the additional conditions?
Yeah, I mean, I think the additional conditions are, the two that I had was with respect, I mean, there's obviously item three on page four of the report. And I think, you know, with the board retaining the jurisdiction as opposed to the TRC assuming responsibility in case those three scenarios arise. I think there's also the issue of when, when the swim club undertakes its construction and eliminates the 73 parking spaces from their lot, that the applicant needs to provide or propose a plan to the township or to the TRC as to how they're going to address the use of the swim club parking lot as a result of that, the loss of those spaces, how, you know, how it will function in that scenario, and how the children will get from that parking lot to the, to the school property. And then there was obviously the one that I mentioned about visiting the site. I think those were the additional...
Also, somehow, we have to kind of make it clear that, that they will be subject to all of the things previously to agree to by the school and through all of the variances that they've obtained.
Yeah, I think that there was that last condition recommended in the report, something along the lines of that they continue to be subject to all previous conditions of previous approvals, except as specifically changed or modified by your resolution.
Okay, I see.
Yep. When you say the previous approvals, you're talking about the previous approvals for the school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think, you know, if, if the board was to approve this, then this would supersede, obviously, that, the temporary use approval for last year.
Oh, okay, yes, absolutely. It definitely replaces the temporary use approval that was granted.
The conditions that Bob read included some of those conditions, so it's carrying some of those forward, you know, basically all of the applicable ones forward.
Yep, okay.
So does the motion have to be restated, or are we ready for a second?
We need a second.
Second.
Okay, now, remember, as you vote, give your reasons for voting, why you're, which way you're voting.
And the motion on the table is to approve, subject to the conditions.
Arrow, the Thea?
I'm a yes, based on, I think it's a good use, even though there are circumstances that could pose a detriment. I think the balance of it, given the specis, specis, I can't say it. Specis, specificity.
Specificity.
Specificity of the conditions help to manage and control and give the board an opportunity to weigh in if there are any violations of those conditions. So based on that, I think there are sufficient controls. I'm comfortable with voting yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes, I think it's a good use. I support the use. I think the operational concerns that we discussed tonight are satisfied by the conditions in the resolution.
Alan Rich?
I'm going to vote no. I don't, they did not, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, they did not satisfy the negative criteria.
Gary Rosenthal?
Okay, because the lawyer wants me to put it on the record again, I say it before, what my concern is, I am not convinced that the school and the swim club are two different entities. There's no question in my mind, because of the current situation and because of the cones where in front of the swim club, that the swim club is not going to do construction. There's no question in my mind that the swim club is going to do construction. And without the swim club, it's just not going to work. So my vote is no.
Robert Shepherd?
I'm going to vote no. I had a number of reasons. I expressed them before. One of them was that I'm concerned about the fact that this is a variance that will, that will run with this land forever. And while I think that the current operator of the school and the, and the day camp, as is testified to by some of the people here, they're very clever people, they do a great job, I just think that the use is too intense for this particular area. And I'm afraid that if new people come along to run this, run this day camp, that they will not be up to the task of doing the things that aren't necessary. I'm also troubled by the traffic on the, on the road, the left-hand turns, as well as the queuing up. I'm also, I'm also, having visited the site, and I know that there've been people that have said that they're not concerned about the, how the traffic moves in the, within the, the day camp and school area. But it was a, it was surprise, it was enough, it looked dangerous enough to me, for me to be concerned. And then, then there's the noise. I'm concerned that, that the people who live in this R40 zone should have some peace and quiet. And I think this is the key part of the summer where people are outside. Everybody's windows are open. Well, maybe not everybody's. A lot of people have air conditioning. But I, I don't, I don't think this is a, a good plan, so I'm going to vote no.
Basim Verdas?
I'm going to vote yes, because I think providing a summer camp and, you know, learning opportunities for 280 kids is a big benefit to our community. I think with working moms and dads, I think it's needed. And although there are some concerns, I think they are, you know, well-covered by all the conditions that are included in the motions. So I'm going to vote yes.
Faraz Khan asked to be recused in the beginning of the meeting. He was unable to view all of the videos that were up. So Michael Doherty, being the third alternate, you have a vote this evening, please?
I am going to vote yes, because I think that it is a good use for the children. I think that with the conditions that are set forth and the maintenance and continued following of those conditions is retained by the board, I think that it leaves the board still some control over whether all those conditions are met.
Well, the motion failed for approval. Four votes yes, three votes no, and five votes were required.
Let me, I'm going to ask you not to rush to do the resolution. I may consider making a motion, making an application to the board for reconsideration if I can get more information on the, and I'm not assuming anything. But we've used that tool before of a reconsideration if there are some issues that I can resolve. And you know that I can't do that after the resolution is passing. It's 10 days or something, that's all. It's just a mechanical issue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your time. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Some move second, yeah.
Thank you. We adjourned.